Okay, I guess we're ready. Before we begin, welcome to our second work session of 2020. Stanford pledge of allegiance, please.
...................................................
Okay, so today is a very special day for the village, for one particular officer on the village department, and for me as well, because she's family, so I'm very excited about this. It's a well-deserved promotion. So I would ask Officer Dunn and Chief Tracy to please join me at the microphone. So before we begin, Chief, could you say a few words, please?
Thank you. As the mayor just said, it's a big day for Officer Dunn, a big day for the department, the board, and most importantly, it's a big day for the residents of the village. We're promoting from police officer to Detective Jen Dunn. She's been with us a number of years as one of our most outstanding officers, one of our busiest officers, and a true asset to the department. And I'm very proud of her, as are, you can see, her peers. And it's a big day for her, and I'd just like to congratulate her on her well-done promotion.
So just to give you a little bit of background, Jen started with the village in 2006 as emergency dispatcher. She distinguished herself there and then moved on to become an officer with the village police department in 2013, where she continued to distinguish herself. And she served in various commands, started out in patrol, and then moved on to the crew unit, which is a special unit which specializes in quality of life issues. She distinguished herself there. Then she was assigned to the detective division as a police officer, and she also performed exemplary there. And so she's being rewarded today, well-deserved, promotion to detective third grade. So... I ask the rest of the board to join me. Don't be shy. I think I got most of you. You, are you still here?
Yeah, he's back there. I don't think he heard you.
Yeah, sorry, I went out of order a little.
I want to tell you about one of Jennifer Dunn's greatest arrests.
Oh, boy.
You ready for this? All right, you're on Doommere Lane, right? And you know where the police have a police car many times by that White House on Doommere Lane? All right, well, I'm coming down Egypt, make a right, and this guy is right behind me. He's just all over me. I'm going as the usual 2025, and this guy is beeping his horn. He can't get past me. All of a sudden, he pulls out, crosses the double line. He must have been going 40 or 50 miles an hour. And there's Jen, dealing with a customer down at the end of the road, waving him in. Waving him in. And he got his ticket. All right. The other night Kenny Cullum and I gave a talk about where almost everybody died. And one of them unfortunately was Roy Mayberry. Roy Mayberry was 18 years old. He had gone to Princeton for a week on a camp, and he was given a scholarship to Princeton University, full scholarship. Unfortunately, he drowned at Albert's Landing that summer, and then the community decided to build tennis courts on the Herrick Park in his honor.
Basketball.
What did I say, tennis?
Yeah, basketball.
No, basketball. Thanks for listening.
You have an attentive audience.
They went up in 1973. And the plaque is still there with a wonderful statement by Pete Carroll, who was the Princeton basketball coach at the time. Well, I remember in 1959, all right, when I was a senior in high school on the basketball team, Kenny Scott and Johnny Hessler challenged me to a game of horse, and they were freshmen. They beat me badly, all right? And I thought we played on basketball courts that were out on the Herrick Park. But Kenny Cullum found a visual of the park in 1962, and there are no courts there. So I'm going to keep going. I'm going to try to get to Bruce Collins, unless they had portable courts that they put on. Were the tennis courts there in 1962?
They weren't. I think they might have had a, on the, at the end of one of the tennis courts, they might have had a basketball. Do you remember that? A hoop, so that if no one was playing tennis, you could play basketball.
Oh, so I could be right.
You could be right.
I could be right. Oh, gosh, all right. Okay. The other thing I want to talk about is, the other night, we didn't talk about Theodores Miller. This was a lecture called Death by Death on the Beach, where many people, shipwrecks or people died on the beach. And Theodores Miller died in the Indian Ocean in 1830. And then the reason we would mention him, besides his death being important, is that his sister was Joanne Miller. Well, who was Joanne Miller? Well, her father was Jeremiah Miller. Well, who was Jeremiah Miller? He was the postmaster in East Hampton, starting in 1816. The house on Main Street is still standing, and there's a little section to the right of it, and that's where the post office was. And I think that's where John Howard Payne stayed when he came here in the 1830s, because he kept writing letters to Joanne, calling her the postmistress or the helper in the post office. I don't think he stayed at home sweet home. That's all I have. That's enough.
Thank you very much, Hugh. Okay, so next on the agenda is the discussion for serial bond refinancing. Becky, could you please?
Sure. As I've outlined for the board in a memo, there are a series of bonds that, beginning next month, are callable, which means that they have the opportunity to be refinanced. The amount of money that can be refinanced at this time is just over $2.2 million. That's what's remaining on the two bonds. And if they are refinanced and, the goal is to consolidate them into one single bond series, which over the course of the payments of the bonds will result in a savings for the village of approximately $80,000. Again, given the village's high credit rating, which is an AA1, which is the second highest rating issued by Moody's, and the favorable conditions with the market right now, it's a good opportunity for the board to refinance those bonds, again, consolidate them into one. And if the board is agreeable, that borrowing would be done in conjunction with the borrowing that you are going to do around the same time in March, Arable, for the Northwest substation. So you'll be doing one instead of two separate transactions. So again, as long as the board is agreeable, you could adopt a resolution at your February 21st meeting to have the bonds refinanced.
Thank you. I just want to thank Becky and her staff for all that she does every single day that's gotten us to this point. I mean, we have such a great bond rating because of her and her staff and the work that they do. And as a result, we're able to take advantage of things like this to really save taxpayers some money. So I want to congratulate you, Becky, and please send our thanks to the rest of your staff. Does anybody else have any comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that as something that I did for close to 40 years of my life in the bond market, this is such a good idea, it's not even funny. So you got my vote.
Okay.
Okay, so then we agree, we'll adopt a refunding resolution at the next meeting?
We all agree.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, discussion for knockboxes. Chief Turza from the fire department, I think, has a presentation for us.
Good morning, Your Honor, members of the board. It's kind of hard to follow the promotion of the best officer you've gotten in the police department, if you actually paid me to say that, but I'm going to try my best. So I'm here this morning to ask the board's consideration to adapt and enact legislation that mirrors what we have in the town regarding emergency key access systems, what we refer to as Knox box systems, for residential and commercial occupancies. We've had it in the township for the last, I believe, decade. It was enacted, I believe, in 2010. You should all have copies of the legislation that's out there. Basically, what it is, is it's a secure key vault system. They're attached to residences and commercial occupancies that, when we respond for automatic fire alarms and other emergencies, it enables the fire department quick access into the premise to check and see if there actually is an emergency. It's a very secure system. It's used internationally. It's used throughout the township. As you all know, the fire department responds to two protection districts. We have roughly just under 200 of these systems throughout the response area for the fire department. They're currently on all village properties, Village Hall, the historic buildings, 88 Newtown, all the beach pavilions, whatnot. We've got, I believe, 16 or 17 of them in the village's commercial district, all voluntarily put there. There are a few scattered throughout private residences throughout the village. I actually did an install yesterday for a builder up on 114 House. I've got a couple more scheduled over the next coming weeks. It's a very secure system, but we don't have it mandated anywhere inside the village of East Hampton. We look at things like the J Crew fire. We had an exposure problem at an adjacent property, Rowdy Hall. Instead of forcing the door, causing damage unnecessarily at times, we were able to use the Knox box that they have voluntarily installed there, enter the premise, check to make sure that there was no fire damage, secure the premise, left. We look at an incident that we had Christmas Eve down on the house on Lily Pond Lane. One of the two premises, houses on the property had a water leak. My two assistant chiefs and I and a village police officer were down there. There was a water leak. There wasn't all that much we could do to stem the damage. Homeowner is not around. Caretaker was 40-something minutes away. There was really no way to safely and accurately and efficiently enter the premise. Something like a Knox box, if it had been installed, would be beneficial for us to get in there, secure the utilities, secure the property from any further damage, you know, something like that. We look at, in our commercial district, we look at a lot of the stories that are all papered up and vacant for the winter. No caretakers, no key holders are going to respond. If I go there in the middle of the night for a fire alarm, I have no way to tell if there is something going on in the basement or anywhere else in the building. We've got to look around for outward signs of a problem. If there are repeat alarms, we have no way to really get into the building. And it comes down to the judgment call of the personnel on scene. Do we force a door? You know, we've got doors, some of the premises in our district that are $25,000. Do I force the door, thereby creating a liability for the fire department and by proxy of the village, based on, you know, sometimes unreliable variables or not? So again, I put before you, you know, for your own consideration, whether or not the village chooses to enact some type of legislation, again, to mirror what we've had in place for a system that's worked pretty well outside of the, outside of the village for the last 10 years.
Okay. You might have mentioned this already, Chief, but did you mention the cost for residential and commercial?
So for residential, there's a couple of options, and I've distributed to the board some different models that are out there that we accept. There's an entry, single-key model that runs anywhere from $140 to about $175, depending on the options that the homeowner wants. They've got different colors to match the trim, different trim variations to kind of help it blend in. If they want a little bit beefier box, it might go up to about $300. The commercial boxes run roughly around $350, and then they can go upwards to about $500, depending on the type of occupancy. One of the, one of the larger boxes was installed at 105 Newtown Lane, the folks' building. It was installed just prior to an event that we had there back in the fall, and we had the builder voluntarily put it there. Some of the insurance companies may give the homeowners and the building owners credit for having these. They are, when we help the building owners and the property owners with their insurance, there is a question that's asked of them, is there a Knox box on the premise? So there are incentives also through their own insurance companies if they have these boxes or not.
Chief, there's, I assume there's like a master key in your vehicle that allows you access to the Knox box?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that how it works?
Yep. In each of the three fire chiefs' vehicles, and in the village fire marshal's car also, there is a safe and secure safe. Each of the fire chiefs has their own specific code. We enter it in. It's kind of like a sword and a stone thing. We unlock the master safe key. We use that to unlock the key vault, and then we get the keys to go into the premise. Once we install the Knox box, so to speak, which is, we go to the premise, we meet with the representative from the property, we explain the system, we lock the key, we notify our dispatch center, which has a very good mapping system, they'll put all that information in. So it pops up on the iPads that we have in the cars, so that we know exactly what we have when we get there. We know that there's a Knox box. The boxes are mounted in a standard location all across the township, so we know exactly where things are. We go in, we do what we have to do, we figure out what the problem is, we rectify it, and we can leave and secure the premise.
In the draft that you gave us from the town that you give us as an example, it says, "All commercial premises equipped with fire or police alarm systems." Will the police also have them in their vehicles? Or is this, you're just talking about the fire at this point?
Just the, just the fire department has them.
Okay. So maybe that language would be different for us. Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any questions?
No, I think basically this is a really good idea. You know, if there was something in my house, I would want you to be able to get in without cracking the door. You can also find my electric hammer.
We're very well-trained and very well-equipped to force entry, but we'd rather walk in in a civilized manner, and property conservation is key.
Yeah, I think this is a very good idea, too.
Okay. So are we all agreed that we should have Beth draft a resolution that we can consider?
Yes.
Beth will take care of that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Next on the agenda, a discussion of parking enforcement. I think Captain Long has a presentation for us.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
So I was asked to speak this morning to review some of the discussions we had at our parking committee meetings. One of the things that we did at the police department, the chief had me look into various options in order to enforce our timed parking in the village. So we, as I believe you have in front of you, I summarized some of the options that are available to us that we can utilize to enforce the timed parking in the parking lots and on the streets. Traditionally, we've used the chalking of tires to monitor when a vehicle parks and when they leave, to make sure that they do not exceed the time limit. And that works very well, but it is labor-intensive. Somebody has to walk around and mark each individual car, and it's also subject to people erasing the mark, people moving a couple of inches. So that has some drawbacks. The second thing we looked at were to purchase new, if we were just to replace the machines that we have. As you know, the parking ticket dispensing machines that we have now are old, they need replacing, they're beyond their, their life, and it's becoming costly to maintain them. So an option would be to just replace those machines. It has shown that we have not had to mark each individual car with the vehicles having the parking pass, but there are also some disadvantages to the parking passes. One is people putting them upside down on their dashboard, not knowing that they have to put them with the time and the date stamp up. There is a possibility that we could get a machine that prints on both sides. But we have people that will forget to put them in the car, they'll misplace them, it'll blow off the dashboard. We've also had problems with improper use of the passes, people swapping them. So there are some drawbacks with parking dispensing. It also creates a queue line in the summertime. It backs out on Newtown Lane from the Rude Shan and Skank parking lots, which, you know, it's a public inconvenience, having to stop at the machine if you're too far away, you're too close, you're too far, too back. So it can create some confusion, and they're costly to maintain each year. I think Becky had looked into, I think it's around $20,000 each year that we pay currently to maintain these machines. So another option would be to install parking meters on the street. We wouldn't need to mark tires. If we entered the plate, it would be more enforceable and less susceptible to misuse, because each person would have to enter their plate, and they would get a pass based on that, on that plate. But there's a large cost to installing a lot of meters up and down the street and in the parking lot, as we saw from the one vendor that came. I mean, we had serious concerns about public inconvenience, where how far would you have to walk to the machine? Would the machine, if it's not at the entrance to the parking lot, okay, where would we put them? Would they be ADA accessible? And I think we can all agree, after that presentation, we had a lot more questions than we had answers. So the parking meters, you know, there's a, there's a substantial public inconvenience. They're costly. There's large installation costs, because each place you put one of these machines, you've got to have power, there's got to be some sort of internet connection, so they all talk to each other. One of the takeaways that I took away from Deputy Mayor Borsak at the meeting with the other parking company was, what about fixed LPRs? You know, when you drive into the parking lot, can't there be a technology that scans the plate? And then you park, you don't have to do anything, and then when you leave, it scans it again, and it'll notice, you know, if you've stayed too long. And that's a great idea, but it should, when we looked into it a little bit further and we talked to some companies, we found that with our parking lots, it would be very costly to do an installation, because each lane coming in and out of the parking lot, so for the Rude Shan, for example, there's four lanes, you know, two ins, two outs, you're talking about $10,000 a lane ballpark to install the camera, to have that technology there reading the plates. That's pretty costly, $40,000 a parking lot, and you're not even talking about handling the streets. And one of the other issues that really became problematic is, how do you serve a summons to somebody once they leave the parking lot? If they are in fact over? We are able to mail summonses to people through the law, but it has, the summons has to be served within the county or adjacent county. So if someone's from Westchester and they violate the timed parking and we mail them a summons, it could be argued that it wasn't served properly. So that's an issue. Just looking over my notes here, unable to mail summonses, and also our parking lots have, we have different time limits in each parking lot. So how do you address that? That was an issue that we found with, with the fixed LPRs. The discussions with some of the vendors that had solutions for fixed LPR camera systems for parking lots and, and different venues suggested, why not using a mobile chalking system? And the mobile chalking system essentially would be a vehicle that has equipment mounted to it that can read the plate. It can read the location through GPS. It can tell you what color the car is and record that. It can tell you how long the car is, and it can take a picture of the car before and after. And that picture can be compared by the officer, when he comes back around, or she comes back around the second time to check the time, okay, it's going to show me two pictures. Is this the same car in the same parking spot? And what was nice about that technology was that it didn't really rely on license plate reading. So as we all know, we have snow here in the Northeast, we have, you know, sometimes the vehicles, the plates are dirty. This system will work even if the plate is not readable. So when the officer drives around, the system will record, okay, where am I at? What is the color of the car? What is the length of the car? And it'll take a picture of the plate and record it if possible, but if it can't record the plate, it will still take a picture of the vehicle, so you can see where the vehicle is, what the surroundings are. You know, if the car is parked here and there's a telephone pole or a street sign next to it, you'll be able to see that kind of overall picture of where the vehicle is. So when the officer comes back around, the system will actually alert the officer and say, okay, we're in the same spot an hour later on Main Street. The car looks the same. It's got the same length, it's got the same color. Oh, I couldn't read the plate, but that's okay. These other things are going to alert the officer, and then a before and after picture will show the officer, okay, this was an hour ago, or an hour and 15 minutes ago, and this is now. Are they the same car? Are they in the same spot? And we actually looked at the technology, we looked at the program from one of the vendors, and I think, you know, I was fairly impressed with the technology. I've seen the technology over the past, you know, 15 years really have come a long way. This technology has been around for a while. We saw it in Jacksonville, Florida, many years ago, and it really wasn't there at that time. They relied heavily on valve stem placement as a means of determining whether the car had been there or had moved. And it really didn't give you an overall picture of where the vehicle was, where this technology really shows you the surroundings, so you can definitively say, you know, anybody could look at, at the two photos and definitively say, yeah, that car, it's in the same spot. And it gives you the ability of really, you know, doing it in a timely fashion. It's one of the nice things about this system is that there's, there's the ability, and I had one of the TCOs drive the village in a route where he would take, if this system were installed, he was able to drive the entire business district and all the parking areas within 25 minutes. So with traffic in the summer, I'm sure that'll be a little bit more, but that included the long-term lot, which you don't have to check every hour, the long-term up by the railroad station. So he was able to do it in a relatively quick time. For somebody to walk on foot with a chalk stick, it would take, you know, half a day to do all that. So that's a big improvement. One of the nice things about this system is there's no public inconvenience. You find a parking spot and you go shop. You come back to your car and you leave. You don't have to get a ticket. We don't have to see all the tickets all over the, all over the, all over the ground in the parking lot. We don't have to worry about somebody putting it upside down. There's no public confusion. There's no element that the public has to do, other than just obey the time limit.
It also eliminates the queuing issue that...
Exactly. The queuing issue, which has become more problematic as time has gone by with more and more cars, the, the line won't be there, because you won't need to stop to get a parking t- there's really no interaction with this type of technology. There's no public interaction at all. The public doesn't have to do anything, other than park.
Until they get a ticket.
And, well, if they get a ticket, then they have to answer the summons, sure. But parking, they just find a spot, and then they just obey the law. But parking, they just find a spot, and then they just obey the law, and then they leave. They don't have to stop and find a ticket machine or anything like that. Just going over my notes so I don't miss anything. There's the maintenance, you know, if we have many parking machines, there's obviously a maintenance issue. Now we just have one individual car with this equipment added to it. The, if the car does break, there are handheld options. So let's say the car, you know, has a transmission issue and it needs to be fixed. While that's out, we can have a handheld do the same thing.
Tony, are you proposing one mobile unit and one handheld?
Yeah, I think at this point, I think that would be good starting point, and we can evaluate it as we move forward. If we need to adjust that, we can certainly adjust it. I think from the modeling that the vendors have, you have a support agreement with them per year, where if anything happens with any of the equipment, it's covered under this yearly maintenance that you pay. And that yearly maintenance, from the numbers I've seen, just talking generally, nothing specific, is less than what we pay per year for the maintenance for the current parking machines. Which only cover two parking lots. This covers the entire village.
I also, you said that the location in the lot, so I know that in Rudishan, we have a couple of half-hour spaces or 15-minute spaces.
Correct.
So it would recognize those as being 15-minute spaces or half-hour spaces?
Yes. The technology for GPS has come a long way, as we all know. We have it in our phones, our cars, and you can get within eight feet. And what's nice is when the officer looks at the picture, he'll know where the, what zone you're in. So when you look at the background where the car is, you'll see, okay, this is obviously on Park Place in the 15 or 30 minute or a handicap spot that's three hours. You'll see the sign. You'll see, that's what's nice about the technology, is it gives you a large area around the vehicle so you know where you're at. But from the edge of Park Place to the stalls inside of Rudishan, the system would know where you are because that great distance, I mean, the lanes are, you know, it's over 12 feet wide.
I think it also gives us the ability, if we wanted to designate specific areas as three-hour parking.
Correct.
So we can change it up in the same parking lot.
That's correct.
And the machine will be able to do that.
That's correct, yep.
I like that.
That's what's nice about this, is you're not locked into anything. Two years from now, if you decide to do something entirely different, it, the system, you just program the system to say, okay, this is now whatever amount of time, and this location here is whatever amount of time. When you first get the system, you go through a map of all the streets and parking lots and you program, okay, this is a three-hour, this is a two-hour, this section here is 15 minutes, this is 30 minutes. And the system, based on that GPS technology, will know where you're at.
I just have a couple more questions, but first, I want to make it clear to the public. This is not a prelude to charging for parking. I want to make that clear. We're not doing this so that we can then start to charge for parking. So that should be made clear. This is, this is a system we want to go to, that's going to be more efficient, to save us money in administering our parking, and give us greater variation in order to do that. The other thing I think it addresses at the public level is that I think the public has an expectation, if when they go in the lot and they get a ticket to park, that there must be a spot for them to park. And it creates a lot of frustration in the summertime when in fact that's not the case. So this will be a situation where you don't get a ticket, you pull in, and if there's not a spa, a spot, there's not a spot. That's just the way it is. It's a busy day. So you don't have that expectation that some way there's got to be a spot for you because the machine gave you a ticket. So it eliminates that. The question I have for you, Captain, is what if somebody moves their car in the lot to a different spot? You know, when they, say it's a two-hour time limit, they go out and they move their car to a different spot. How would we deal with that?
So one of the issues when you take the parking ticket machines out now, when you have a parking ticket machine, you have to leave the lot to get another one, or as some people do, they find somebody that has another parking ticket and they, they don't move the car and they just replace it with another one. But in order to address that, there are a couple of different things you can do legislatively. A lot of municipalities require that, once you've stayed for the time limit, you have to move certain amount of feet away from that parking spot. So if you were to say legislatively that, you know, once you park in this parking spot here, you have to move 100 feet away, that's very common in other municipalities. You could say you can't be in any adjacent parking space. You can also say you can't be in that parking lot. It's all depends on how you want the parking regulations to be enforced. But a lot of municipalities will do that distance from the original parking spot. That way, there's no question. They clearly moved, and then they came back.
Okay.
So it can be addressed legislatively.
I think that's something we should consider because there are a lot of people who park in one spot and then would be possibly tempted to just move their car to the other spot and do the two-hour shuffle, as we refer to it. Overall, I think I'm very impressed with this system. I too was originally looking, or, you know, thought of looking into the fixed LPR, and I understand there's some complications for us in doing so, but I think this is completely user-friendly as opposed to the meters. There's no, the consumer doesn't have to do anything but park and abide by the time restriction and any other restrictions we put on it. I also think that since it has the capability to enforce different timed parking zones within the lots, that's very appealing to us as well. We have the 30-minute, you know, along the perimeter of Park Place. We have the handicapped, which is three hours. And currently, we have the two-hour for the rest of the lot, the 300 spots roughly in Rudishan. I'd like to see us consider making one of the lots three-hour parking. I know we've had two-hour parking for a very long time, you know, decades ago. That probably worked for the village. The shopping dynamic of the commercial district is completely different than it is now. You know, there was no Amazon, there was no online shopping. People had to come into the village, and we were looking to move them along in a, in a time, timely fashion, where now, I think, we are hoping people come in and shop and dine, and it's hard to do so in three hours. You can't see a movie in three hours and park in the Rudishan lot. So I think that's also something that we should consider as a board as well, is trying, trying the three-hour time restriction in one of our lots.
And that's what's nice about this, you can do that.
Yeah, there's a lot of flexibility with the system.
You can change it back.
You could even differentiate spots in the same lot.
Correct.
So there's a lot of things that we could, a lot of possibilities.
Correct, yeah. One of the things too, just to, you can also study how vehicles are moving in the parking lots, because it records all this. So you can see, okay, this car went from here to here, or here to here. There were reports that the company said that we can generate to see how this affects the people that are parking in the lot, so you can analyze that. You can say, oh, you know, we've had, you know, 50% of our vehicles, they're, you know, they're in the Rudishan lot for more than, you know, six hours a day, and they just, and they're just moving around. And then you could change legislatively, if that was an issue, you could change the law to address that. So it's, it provides the ability to kind of analyze your parking habits.
And we do have our consultants looking at the parking lots and, you know, they're going to make some recommendations to us too, so I think this, this will be great.
Can I just make one comment? I think the board needs to also consider the signage in the lot may need to change. You know, when you go into the lot, you get a ticket that's triggering the fact that you're subject to certain time restrictions.
Right.
So I think your signage may need to be looked at again.
Yeah, if we went with a different system, we would definitely have to change the regulations.
And we may just, I think, if we did do this, we would still, maybe just with the lots, we would still continue what we've been doing on the streets, see how this goes, or we could do...
You could roll it out immediately to all over. It wouldn't matter. I mean, you could just restrict it, just if you wanted to do a study, but there's no real reason not to just kind of include everything. But you could.
Do we need a car for the mobile unit, or are we going to repurpose something that we have?
I think we have, we'd be able to repurpose. I don't think it's necessary.
What are the costs of the units, Captain?
I'd rather not talk about costs in a public forum, if, because we...
It needs to go out to bid. I mean, so we're not, you know, officially soliciting costs at the moment.
I don't have anything in stone anyhow, but yeah, we'd have to go out to bid and...
Right. No, I was just asking for an estimate. I understand.
Less than a million dollars.
(laughing).
I don't want to break the...
Well, I'm really impressed, thank you.
The purchasing rules, so we have to be careful.
Also, is there the ability of this? I know no one's talking about this right now, but is there ability for this system to interface with an app that people could have on their phone?
So one of the things we, I didn't ask that specifically, but one of the things I did talk about were if there were kiosks, for whatever reason, if you wanted to have a kiosk where you could, you know, for instance, pay to park longer. The system could talk to that kiosk, and the kiosks, some of the kiosks have the ability to have an app where you can just, instead of going to the kiosk, you would just use your app, and that would talk to the system.
So for instance, if someone was shopping and they realized they were going to go over their two hours, we could charge for the third hour, and they could do that through their app?
Yes.
Or at the kiosk to stay an extra hour or...
Yes. That's my understanding, that some of the kiosks have apps, which I actually, I mean, anybody can go online and look at these kiosks. And they have, some of the vendors do have apps that will talk to the kiosk, so you don't have to go to the, you could be in, you know, the movies and say, oh, we're not going to make it.
Right.
And, and just re-up your parking. So that's a, you know, a separate kind of add-on to this.
We could also, if they had an app, we could do a push notification.
Right.
To your phone saying, all right, you have 17 minutes left.
Yes. Now, that is possible, but each, at that point, you would then have to have, have entered your information for your car.
Right.
So you wouldn't just, I'm sorry, you wouldn't just have to park at that point to get a push notification, you would have to enter your information somewhere, whether it be an app or a kiosk, because it has to know where you parked and when you parked in order to send you a notification, send your times about up.
But so if we put a email address or the app information, whatever it would be, on the beach permit.
Okay.
Then all village residents would be dialed into the system that if they had the app, the system would know where to send it, because it recognizes the village car from the parking district.
Yes. But you would still have to say, I parked in the Rudishan lot at this time, so it knows...
It wouldn't read it? It wouldn't read your car and then say, this car has been here? So you might get, you know, two hours and 15 minutes.
Yeah. So you're saying the mobile unit, as it goes around and records the vehicles?
Mm-hmm.
I, that's, as I tell everyone, everything's possible, it's just time and money. I, I'm sure they could do, I understand what you're saying. It records your vehicle, okay, that vehicle has, is a village permit holder, and now it would have to say, okay, I recorded it at this time, it's got two hours, so in an hour and 45, I need to send that permit holder's registered email an email saying that you're, I think that could be done.
I don't know if we...
I can see the flow in my head.
Yeah, I don't know if we want to do that. I don't know if the people in the village would want that either, but you know.
Yeah.
I think, as you say, anything's possible.
Yeah.
I think it's great. Brings us into the 21st century, which is kind of nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice because the public, there's, they just have to park, which is good.
So just one more question, Captain. If, would this system, I know if it drives by the car again, it's going to tell the officer that this car has been there too long or over the limit.
Correct.
If for some reason the officer is tied up on something and he is not going through that lot or in that area, does, does the system get a notification that, of the cars that have been parked, say, or the two-hour limit on the cars, or that's not in the system?
It would have to go back to record it again to know that it's over.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have to see it there.
Right. So it's not going to just flash, you know, all you, he drives through the lot. Now, two hours later, it's not going to come up on the screen, all these cars that have been there two hours.
Not until it passes the vehicle.
Okay.
But you would, could have someone with a handheld going through the lots.
Yes, yeah.
Instead, if the other car is taking the cell.
Correct.
There's another way to do it.
Correct.
I would be inclined to doing a handheld and a mobile unit.
The handheld is handy because if there are certain spots, you just, and as the chief points out, you know, in August, the parking lot is bumper-to-bumper. So the car may not be able to effectively drive through the lot.
Right.
So we, they actually, we actually had a demo of a handheld where we went out into the parking lot out back and actually scanned the cars, and it's, it's very, it's quick. It takes a picture and it records it, and you move on. So you can use the handheld in lieu of the vehicle. So yes.
Yeah. You could use them together.
Exactly.
At this point, too.
Yep.
Gives you more flexibility.
All right. Any other questions?
I think it sounds great.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess the next step is to do a resolution and put it out for bid? Becky?
Yeah, we'll put together a bid spec, and the board can put it out.
Okay. All right.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, so let's, now we're up to the resolution motion part of the meeting. There's only three, so Rose, would you read the first one?
I'd be happy to. Number one is to adopt Resolution Number 6-2020, hereby appointing Police Officer Jennifer Dunn to the position of Detective Third Grade at an annual salary of $136,577.34, effective February 16, 2020. Please refer to the January 23, 2020 memo from Police Chief Tracy.
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm recusing myself from this, so there'll be three in favor. I'm a recusal. Passed and carried.
Tigre.
Tigre, please.
Next is to adopt Resolution Number 7, 2020, hereby appointing Nicholas Kahn to the position of full-time paramedic at an annual salary of $59,300, effective February 16, 2020. And that's in reference to a Jan. 31 memo from Chief Tracy.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So carried?
Next is to adopt Resolution Number 8, 2020, regarding a temporary suspension of certain provisions of the Village Code relating to signs where applicable, to allow commercial properties to decorate for the village's centennial celebration.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? So carried.
And just a little comment about that resolution. That really came from the Centennial Committee that Barbara and I serve on. We wanted to make sure that the Commercial District knew that if they'd like to decorate in honor of the centennial, that they'd be able to do so with, we have some parameters that they would be in the red, white, and blue theme, no lights, but they'd be able to have banners, signs, streamers, and flags and so forth. And we put a date from September 1st through November 30th. We thought that would give people an opportunity to really celebrate and to decorate, and we're looking forward to the celebration in general.
Okay, thank you. That concludes our resolution portion of the meeting. Now we're down to the public comment. Would anybody like to address the board?
I'm curious, in terms of parking.
Could you, could you just go up to the microphone, please, so just identify yourself, please?
Augusta, or Auguste, folks. With the parking, one of the things that really are reoccurring are the people who are employed in this town. And, you know, take for instance, the hardware store, and those guys have to, every two hours, move their cars, get out of the parking lot, come around, go back. So I don't know whether or not you've ever thought about, with the people who actually live in this town and work here, what you can do to help them be able to park and work and not have to be constantly under pressure? Just a comment.
It's something that we think about a lot, making the long-term lot more accessible. As someone also who works in the village, above one of the stores, has an office there, I understand the plight of all of those employees who work in the Commercial District. And part of our plan that we've spoken about is making a more of a direct access from the Rudishan parking lot to Long Term, possibly thinking about incorporating something like the circuit or an electric vehicle that could bring people back and forth to make it more accessible and convenient. I mean, that's the real goal. And while we're talking about it, I have thought a lot about 8 Osborne Lane. We recently purchased that parking lot. There's 21 spots, and it is underutilized. And I've often thought, you know, maybe we should consider making that merchant parking. There's 21 spots there. That would also lessen the people who are doing the two-hour shuffle in the Rudishan and Skank Lot if we actually opened that up for merchants. No one's really using it now. So that's also an option for us to think about. We could even, you know, think about charging, doing paid parking there, $1,000 per parking spot. That would be $21,000 a year. That's for an individual. If they, each business were given one, based on a lottery perhaps, that would be $2.70 a day or something like that, very reasonable. It would also allow then for the mom-and-pop shop to, you know, maybe utilize it as well as those who have a different business model, the higher-end stores as well. So it's something that we think about and we need to do something about.
I think it's important for people to understand, we did a survey a number of years ago, that if all the people working in the village parked all day, there would be no parking for anybody else because there are more people working in the village than there are parking. Right. And it was actually the merchants that required us to go to the timed parking a number of years ago because that's what was happening. There was no place for their, for their customers to park because all of the people working there were parking in the parking lots. So it's a difficult problem, but, you know, we do think about it. But, you know, we'll, we'll continue to discuss it.
Yeah. And I also think, as Captain Long mentioned, with this new scanner parking, were we to adopt that, we would then have a much better idea of how many cars come to the village, how long they stay there, who they are, et cetera. And frankly, with more information, we can then hopefully make better policy.
When will the consultant be giving us their suggestions and recommendations?
I think that was in March.
In March?
Yeah.
Just bear in mind too, when you're talking about parking, that we've spoken about before about, and, you know, Beth can probably weigh into, about restricting who can actually park in a public lot. It's not restricting the class or type of individual that can park in a public lot. So when you're talking about employees or merchants or things like that, that you would have to come up with another way, not restricting a type or a class of individual who can actually park in the lot.
Couldn't we do a permit, Becky?
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's different than what I just said. You're not restricting the type of person that's in the lot.
Right. We would have to be, make sure it's accessible for anyone to utilize it. Probably the only ones who would want to pay for parking would be people who are in the Commercial District, merchants, people who work in offices and shop owners. But yes, we should, thank you for that.
The reason the long-term lot was put in originally was for the merchants because of that problem. It was to give them an opportunity to park all day in the same spot because of the problem of parking. So it's a complicated problem, but we hear you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Hey, good morning, everybody. I'd like to just make a couple of comments as retired village police chief. First, I'd like to congratulate Jen. She worked under me for many years in dispatch and also as a police officer. And she's well-deserving of this promotion. She's just a terrific person and really caring. And she does an absolutely great job. So that's number one. The second comment I have as retired chief of police is, I was with Captain Long and I think Larry Cantwell when we went to Jacksonville to look at that mobile enforcement system. And it's absolutely, even back then, it was dynamite. And it's definitely the way I think the village should be going with that. It's, and if you can add in the apps at this point, I think that's even better. I certainly support the idea of the three-hour parking, but I think it should be charged. I think you'll have the same problem you're having now with the employees. If they have three hours left, they move the cars less. So I think the, paying for anything over two hours would be a great idea. And that money can be earmarked for some great projects for the village. So I love Rose's idea about the, I'm sorry, Trustee Brown's idea about the, that parking lot that is underutilized on Osborne. I mean, that parking lot was $1.1 million that the board paid for that. So, and it's not used at all. So I think that's a great idea for the lottery. Okay. So those are my comments as former or retired chief of police. Now I have introduced myself. I'm Jerry Larson. I'm candidate for village mayor. And I have a couple of questions. There was a hearing on January 21st about the telephone polls or utility polls on McGurk Street and King Street. And the hearing closed on the 29th. And I just wanted an update on what the board's doing.
I'm going to read a statement regarding that in a few minutes, as soon as everybody's done asking questions.
Okay.
So I'll have any answer.
All right, so I'll wait for that and if I have any questions, I'll come back up. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody on the board?
I do have a couple of things I'd like to talk about. I've had a couple of ideas that I would like to go past the rest of you and, you know, see what you think about them. I think that it would be, I think we all can agree that traffic is a major problem in the summer here. And it occurred to me at one point this past summer that a lot of our traffic issues intersect with the town traffic issues. So I was thinking that maybe a joint task force between the town and the village to talk about traffic issues might be a worthwhile endeavor. I had a very informal conversation with the supervisor about it. He's enthusiastic about the idea. We would have to talk further about it, of course, and decide who would be on the task force. I would anticipate the police chiefs and maybe the DPW, has it the DPW? And maybe some citizens to talk about traffic in general in East Hampton. Because I think that some of the, the solutions that we can come up with, we have to work with the town for and vice versa. So that's one idea. I wanted to run by you guys and see what you thought about that.
I think that's a pretty good idea. However, I think that the data that we get from the parking system, if we go that route, which I think we will, we're going to know an awful lot more about our traffic at that point. And, you know, perhaps then, you know, I'm not suggesting that maybe we make, you know, suggest that the town take on the same sort of system so they can get a better hold of their traffic too. You know, again, I think having a discussion about traffic in general between the village and the town would be centered around the village. I mean, I don't think that the town particularly cares what we think about what goes on in Montauk.
No, but I think what Barbara's talking about is an area where we could join together to improve traffic flow, for example, North Main Street, Collins Avenue, Akabonic Highway, that. So just for example, the railroad put up a stop sign. It would be southbound at Collins Alley and our avenue. And I think that's been tremendous help to clearing traffic out coming, well, at that point, it would be north on Akabonic and turning left onto Collins Avenue. So if we could talk about areas that we have mutual interest in and better ways to clear traffic through those areas, I think would be a big improvement. Because whatever doesn't get through those areas is going to get backed up in the village. So I think that's what she's talking about. I don't know.
Well, that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about. But I also think that, you know, they could discuss the idea that we've talked about in the past about some kind of a shuttle system that wouldn't just be in the village, but, you know, maybe a town-wide shuttle system that would drop people at beaches or whatever. I mean, that could be part of their, of their discussion as well, so. I just think sometimes if we work together, we can accomplish more than if we were working separately.
Yeah, I think we need to interface with the town better as a board.
That's my feeling. So if you, if you're in agreement, then, you know, Rick could just talk to them.
Sure, absolutely. We can, we can talk about it and maybe start that committee or task force and start to work on that, all right?
Okay. Another thing I've been thinking about is an increased presence on social media. I'd like to work on the possibility of a Facebook page for the village where we can post, you know, beach information, you know, whatever is appropriate at the time. I would have to work with Becky on that because she would have to administrate it. It would have to be through her office. Not that other people wouldn't have some access to it, but she would have to be actually the ultimate person. So if everybody agrees on that, I'd like to look into that.
Yes. We've talked about that before, that that would be a great way to communicate with the public. So I fully support that.
Okay.
Absolutely. Sure.
I thought it might be a nice idea to start something at Village Hall. Maybe once a month, have a coffee at Village Hall on a Saturday morning, which would allow people to come in. We could have two board members. We can't have more than two board members at a time, but two of the board members, the mayor and one board member, and they could rotate, would be there maybe from 8:00 to 10:00 on a Saturday morning or Sunday morning. Again, we'd have to discuss the logistics of it and have some of the department, different departments represented as well so that it gives people an opportunity to come in. They don't have to stand up in front of a microphone and ask a question about, you know, how can they do this at their house? You know, talk to someone from Code Enforcement or whatever. And I think it gives opportunity for weekends, which are a little easier for some people to, to come in and talk. And Village Hall, of course, is not open on, normally on a Saturday or Sunday. So I thought that might be an interesting thing to try and see if we get any, anybody coming in. I mean, if we don't and we tried for six months, then we wouldn't have to continue. But I thought it might be interesting to try something like that.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that. I think that's a great idea.
And if we have a Facebook page, we can announce it when we're going to do it.
Get the message out.
And the last thing I wanted to mention today was, I thought it might be interesting for us to change the public comment. I noticed the town board does this. They have public comment at the beginning of the meeting, which allows people the opportunity to come and speak and not have to sit through the whole meeting if they have a specific issue that they want to talk about. I don't think that necessarily means that no one can comment at the end if they want to comment on something that was discussed. But if we have public comment to open the meeting, that would give us the, someone the opportunity to come and speak and be able to leave and not have to sit here for an hour if it's a long meeting. How do you feel about that?
I think that's just fine.
I thought that's what we also had discussed, that the public, the public comment is new actually to our agenda.
For a work session, right?
For a work session, although most often the mayor in the past, and I'm sure you would have as well, let people speak and give their opinion. But we thought we should put it in as an actual item so that people know that they will have the opportunity to offer a public comment. And I certainly agree with you. I think it would be better if it was in the beginning so that they can offer their opinion early on.
Okay, I think we all agree on that. So that's an easy change.
Thanks.
We can change that right away. So we'll do that going forward. Anybody else? Any other comments? Okay, so I have a statement to read regarding the poll riser on Cooper Lane. As you all know, the village board held a public hearing on January 21st, 2020, regarding an application by PSEG for a new riser poll on Cooper Lane. Following the hearing, the village was served with a summons and complaint by the homeowners at 51 Cooper Lane. As the pending PSEG application is the subject of that litigation, the trustees are reserving decision on the application for a later date. In the meantime, we would like to make the public aware that the board would like to establish an advisory committee to explore all options regarding the PSEG transmission lines and to review the public's concerns. So with that in mind, I'd like to ask Trustee Brown and Trustee Graham if you would be on that committee. It'll be strictly an advisory committee. They're not going to make any permanent decisions at the committee. They'll just come back to the board with comments and suggestions. And hopefully, we can move forward from there. Okay? Anybody else? Any other comments?
If you could, you said a later date. Do you have any idea on the timeframe?
No, it's, as I said, we're involved in litigation, so it's kind of going to hinge on that.
So if I could just ask you, like, the public hearing that was on the 21st was not well-noticed? I know we heard that that night. But if you could put it at least on the website, like Becky does all the notices on the, on the website, then people would get it on the agenda. So that would be much more helpful, easier to check that than to call you and say, hey, what's going on?
Okay.
All right?
I think we do do that now.
It wasn't on there for the 21st, though.
I know, maybe you didn't get the notice, but I'm just saying, there was quite a few people here and it was well-noticed, but your comments are taken into account, all right?
Actually, you had asked me yesterday to serve on the committee. And I had told you I would think about it, but yes, I'd be happy to serve on it since you're putting me on the spot. And I am looking forward to trying to get a group together and that we can come up with a collective option that would be agreeable to all the parties involved. And we'll see what can, we can do.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Tiger. Okay, so, with business being handled, I have a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourned. Thank you. Thank you for coming.